So regular meeting of the city council and WPCA meeting. For the record, today is Monday, February 6th, 2023. We have town members participating in person here. I had Councilwoman Cavenero, Councilwoman Manichia participating via Zoom. I have Councilwoman Oliver, Councilwoman Walden, and Councilwoman Rillette. With that said, my meeting is complete. So first time we adjourned this evening is public comment. But before I call for the public to take to the microphone, I wanted to take this opportunity to just honor a couple of dedicated and recently retired public servants. For those of you that are aware, Edward Willnot and John Cisco are two registrars of voters. Both decided that they were prepared to retire and in November of 2022 did not rerun for those positions. And I wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge them and give them an opportunity to say their official goodbye. So I'll start with Ed. Can you meet me at the microphone?
Right here?
Yes, yeah. So we have State Representative Michelle Cook here also because she reached out to me as well and saying, hey, what are we doing? You know, we've got these great public servants who have dedicated a good part of their last couple of decades with us. So we put our heads together. And the question that came up pretty quickly was, does anybody have Edward Willnot's file? So we immediately got on the board and said, you know, more than just when he was elected and served as a registrar, he had a whole life before this. So I went on the hunt and then Rillette ran from my office, finished the hunt for me. And one of the most interesting things that we came across was a CT Insider article that was written on October 1st of 2009, where we learned that after 47 years working for the state of Connecticut, Torrington resident Edward Willnot retired from his job at the Department of Transportation?
Auditors.
Auditors Office? Well, those are the two. You started in the Department of Transportation and went to the auditors office. But most interesting about this was when he retired, it was then Governor Joey M. Rome that declared Thursday, October 1st, Edward C. Willnot today. A lot of people getting dated in Connecticut. So in 2012, Ed was elected registrar of voters. He was a retired state of Connecticut employee for 7 years. He has been serving as a justice of the peace since 2009. Chairman of the Services for Elderly Commission. He has been on this commission since 2020. Is a board member of the community kitchen of Torrington. An active member of Elk's Lodge of Torrington since 1965. I don't want to tell you what grade he was in then. 1991 through 92, exalted ruler, 2012 to 2013, elk of the year, volunteer for Warner Theater, volunteer for Operation Overflow, and a member of Trinity Episcopal Church. I don't know where you're from, trying to be such a great registrar of voters. But we're grateful, we're grateful for your service to the city of Torrington. And I just wanted to present you with this declaration and recognition of your 10 years of service as a Republican registrar of voters. Throughout the years, you've worked tirelessly to ensure that our federal, state, and local elections were conducted timely, responsibly, and with the highest level of professionalism. The city of Torrington is thankful for your devotion and service to the community and to our electoral process. Sincere congratulations and best wishes for your happy and healthy retirement. Although based on all these other boards you serve on, I hardly call that retirement. So I have this for you.
Okay, thank you.
And before I turn this over to Michelle, for John Cisco. So if you could think of a time. Yeah, come on in, yes. So again, you know, more than just the service of 20 years as a registrar of voters.
Don't ask me how that happened.
We started when we were obviously still in high school. These are the kinds of things, you know, these are not full-time jobs. This is, this is a job you do in addition to all of the other things that you do. Your regular career, your raising a family, or being a member of this community. But 20 years of service, your service in the Elk's Lodge of Torrington, member for 36 years. Just proud of what you've done for this community and continue to do for this community. So again, in recognition of your 20 years of service as a Democratic registrar of voters for the city of Torrington, thank you for your tireless service, ensuring that our federal, state, and local elections were conducted timelessly, timely, excuse me, responsibly, and with the highest level of professionalism. We are incredibly thankful for your devotion and service to our community and to the electoral process. Sincere congratulations and best wishes for happy, healthy retirement.
Thank you very much.
Pass the time?
Yes.
Well, thank you all very much. And Mayor, thank you for helping do some of the research in Tamorette as well. I mean, it's, it's difficult. I'm sorry to talk with my back to you all. I always found this is very weird. It's very difficult to find folks that are willing to put their name out there and serve the public. We recognize that folks that do that, even though they might be elected, it definitely doesn't pay well. But it definitely takes so much time and dedication to the community. So as, as we looked at retirement from both of you, we thought it was extremely important to recognize and not let this go without notice. And so I have from the state of Connecticut, the General Assembly and official citation, and I will read them separately. The contents, the beginnings and the ends are the same. But the state of Connecticut, the General Assembly and official citation, introduced by myself, Representative Case Senator Harding, Senator Semenera. Be hereby known to all, the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to you, Ed. In recognition of your retirement, serving the city of Torrington as certified registrar of voters over the last 10 years, your contributions to our community are remarkable. Being an active member of the Elk's Lodge since 1965, for which you were recognized as Elk of the Year, serving as chairman of the Services for the Elderly Commission, as a board member of the community soup kitchen, as a justice of the peace, as a volunteer for the Warner and the Overflow, and as a member of the Trinity Episcopal Church, we wish you a happy retirement and best wishes in your future endeavors. Given today, signed President Pro Tem Martin Looney, Speaker of the House Matt Ritter, and Secretary of the State Stephanie Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you. So John, in recognition of your retirement as certified registrar of voters for the city of Torrington for over 20 years of service, your dedication to our community is noteworthy. As a local business owner, an active member of UNICO for 23 years, including serving as president from 2009 to 2010, as a corporator of the Torrington Historical Society, a member of the Elk's Lodge since 1988, and serving as exalted ruler in 1999 and 2000, we wish you a happy retirement and best wishes on your future endeavors as well. Signed, President Pro Tem Martin Looney, Speaker of the House Matt Ritter, and Secretary of the State Stephanie Thomas. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much. Thank you guys so much.
I just wanted to thank John Cisco. I'd like to thank John Cisco, Debbie Tracy, Janice, and Moses Pan. Because without them, it made the job so much easier. And thanks again.
Thanks, Ed. And I'd like to reiterate those thank yous to all those folks who help our office. We may, Ed and I have been friends for a long time prior to this, but we all made great friendships along the way. We have great workers. Nan goes above and beyond. And the thing I want to stress about our elections is our office is an elections office. It has nothing to do with political parties and issues. And we conduct elections and it's all about making sure that that happens and that the voter can get out there and cast their ballot the way it should be done. And we're very proud of that. And Ed and I have made sure that that was the case. And we have a lot of good people, including the folks that do the setup of the places. And there's lots of intricacies to it. A lot of great people. And thank you for all the support of all the elected officials over the years. It's been a great, great run. I thank you.
Carol, thanks to count all those apps.
So we are still on item number one, public comment. So I would entertain and open the meeting to the public and go into section four, E and C, Council WPCA meeting.
So.
And to the public, is there anyone in the public wishing to address?
Hi, I'm James Slade, 204 Benham Street. And I'm here responding to what was a newspaper saying about our garbage pickup. And I was really dismayed to see that people would have to get up and put their garbage out at 4:00 AM in the morning of the day of pickup. I know my garbage, they come around 6:30 in the morning. I don't know if that was a typo because it just doesn't seem possible that 4:00 AM would be the time that you would put the trash out. So that's a concern. I had to sleep till 7:00.
Mayor, I made a correction on that. I misheard you in the meeting. It's 4:00 PM right now.
Thank you. You were, you were not the only one to get a lot of phone calls and emails on that one.
Sure, we're still opening up all the other public comment.
Hi, good evening. Steve I. Dang, Torrington resident. I want to thank the state for its support of the trails, the grant process, the assistant town planner Nate Nardi Cyrus for all his efforts to assist Torrington Trails Network. Even the land trust and Conservation Commission are all assisting to make some of these trails available and any kind of work efforts or grants. But again, the city's been doing a lot of lifting on that front. The network trails is just a dynamic thing that we have in Torrington. I mean, we could be the city of parks and public lands. And it's a fantastic resource we have local. So just to find this land that we have behind Ocean State Job Lot all the way to Newfield Dam Road is a fantastic green space that we find inside our city, which is a rare find for a Canadian city to make that available. Will be a fantastic feature to our city. So thank you.
I'm James husband Sam Slade, 204 Benham Street here in Torrington. And first, I want to say how much I appreciate the city of Torrington going forward, this action against the owners of Yankee Pedlar. It's, it's been a blight on this town for far too long. The Yankee Pedlar should be one of the diamonds in our set of jewels for the city of Torrington. And it's worse than a piece of coal right now. And I would encourage you to be aggressive in that suit. And also to be more aggressive in enforcing the statutes we have now to enforce our, I mean, our play regulations. It saddens me sometimes to drive around trying to see what kind of, what kind of actually correctness some of our properties are in. And also some total disregard of common decency in what's posted. I mean, as you all know, there's a house on Wall Street that has the President of the United States on it in greatly bold colors. I mean, just in a sense that if it was the same type to think of somebody in the political party that I support, politics has nothing to do with that. There's some common decency. And it's these kinds of public display, despicable acts that hurt the city of Torrington. And I know it's a freedom of speech issue, but I'm also cognizant that if a small business owner in this town put up a sign that was two inches over requirements of our zoning regulations, the man would be subject, first of all, to a warning. But then he could be, be subject, he or she could be subject to a fine for every day he's in violation. And yet we have huge, we have no statute restricting what kind of signings can be put up, and the size of the signs, et cetera, the city of Torrington. I understand it's a freedom of speech issue. But again, there are exceptions to freedom of speech. I think we should be searching for those, to enforce this kind of law. Responsibility comes along with freedom. And you can't have one around the other. And, but again, I would like, again, to encourage the city of Torrington, doing whatever it can to promote a town that is, that can be as beautiful as we all think it is and whose image can be as beautiful as I know experience. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Trevon Whitaker, I'm a Torrington resident. Here to speak about the trails as a Torrington resident and as somebody who may be affected by the proposed path. I kind of find that it's, it doesn't do well for the city of Torrington as residents not to let the people that would be affected know about the plans that are coming up and the changes that may affect them. I haven't heard anything about a vote. I haven't been notified. I've been on that property for over 14 years. I've not heard a single thing. And then tonight I find out that we're voting on a grant. I, you know, I'm just not very happy about it. I know that the mayor has had a meeting with one of the other residents that will be affected as well. To despite it, still, nothing has been told to the residents. At least on my street, and I guarantee you for the rest of the proposed path, that nobody else has heard anything about it either. I don't think that is right, that we should vote on that. I know the grant deadline is coming up, but, you know, notification of these things should have been handled ahead of time. I also have friends that will be affected by the current path that you guys are talking about, that's on the agenda for the grant tonight. And I know that they haven't heard anything about it either. So I just, before that, we do, yeah, we at least take a little bit more time and inform the residents so that they can have their concerns heard. Maybe we can come up with a plan together. And even, you know, it's going to be town money that's going to be spent on this. And I haven't seen anything on vote tonight in every single election about money being allocated from our money to go to this project. Those are my concerns.
Sure. And I hope you'll stick around on the presentation and discussion on this because I do think there may have been some misinformation on this trail, its location, and how far along we are in planning. So, so to that point, if you would stick around and we can have the presenters or presenter try and address some of those issues for you.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for coming out. Right. Last call. Anybody else want to call again? Same here now, more than a year or two. I want to take a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes dated January 13, 2023. Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia. And Secretary of the Council, Lieutenant Cavenero. Questions, comments, and the minutes. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. Item three, I'll enter a new motion on the recommendation. Actually, I'm going to take four and five, and I'm going to collapse them into one motion because the ordinance committee meeting that occurred prior to this did identify that this is one chapter in the ordinance book. So all three of these are technically the same ordinance. So the motion I am looking for is under recommendation of the ordinance committee, vote to schedule a public hearing for a new section of chapter 194, vehicles and traffic. This would involve ordinance numbers 194-3.1, 194-4, 194-16, and 194-24. Do I have a motion to?
Mayor? Sorry.
Also again.
And second, the motion, by Councilwoman, second by Councilwoman Manichia. And again, just to make sure everybody is understanding, this is a public hearing to be scheduled on February 21st, 2023. All right, floor is open for questions or comments. Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Item six, this is the separate ordinance chapter. So I will entertain a motion and recommendation of the ordinance committee to schedule a public hearing for a new ordinance, chapter 181, trees, shrubs, and woody vegetation, on February 21st, 2023.
So.
Councilwoman Manichia?
Second.
And Councilwoman Cavenero? Questions or comments on this? And again, this will be February 1st, 2023. I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I will entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Karen A. Speck as a regular member of the Conservation Commission that will remain of return as set to expire on September 5th, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavenero, and second, Councilwoman Manichia. Questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143-237, authorizing the mayor to execute Form RD 1942-6, letter of intent to meet conditions, Form RD 1940-1, request for allegation of funds, and all other documents required by USDA Rural Development to process an application for a USDA community facility grant, Nat Twixie, $1100 for completion of the construction of the Northwest Hills Regional Animal Control Facility.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rillette.
Sorry.
Councilwoman Manichia? All right, questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143-238, authorizing the mayor to apply for the CT Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Recreation Trails Grant in the amount of $439,700 to be matched by $281,500 in city funds as further explained in the subset city planners memo dated February 6th, 2023.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
And the second, I have the Councilwoman Walden. And the floor is open. Nate, will you just expand a little bit on this?
Sure. Hello, everyone. So I've been working on this grant with RISTA along with our city engineer, Paul Conzins, and Traffic Police Officer Baldus. So we're putting together an application just looking at city-owned property essentially behind the Ocean State Job Lot that was purchased for the express reason for building a trail on that site. That'll be the vast majority of the development of the trail. There's a small section within Ocean State Job Lot that we're looking and we're in conversations with Ocean State Job Lot to get a trail easement to provide access connecting that property with city right-of-way. And, and then the rest of the trail route will be on McDermott Ave to North Elm and ultimately connecting up to across that street. So the majority of the funds that we're asking for as part of this grant are for the work on city property, at least on the area behind Ocean State Job Lot. And the vast majority of the matching funds were allocated to the city's street bonding for improvements that were already planned for McDermott Ave. So a large portion of the match is actually already allocated and will be spent on that project anyway, so we can leverage that funding. The only additional item there that would be an additional $50,000 for, for doing some, some planning around kind of redevelopment of the actual Greenway area because it's not quite as flat enough to just put a trail on. There needs to be kind of some additional engineering work. So we'd like to include that in our match as well. And that's pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically about the project to, you know, our concerned citizen who brought up that point before. This route is, is, you know, already largely on city-owned property. It's not really adjacent to any residential lots for the most part. And, you know, this was, this property was purchased for the express purpose of developing a trail on it. And we're really just kind of bringing that to life at this point with the help of Torrington Trails and our other city departments.
Thank you, Nate. And just to fill in a little bit of the gap here when we talk about this section of the rail behind Ocean State Job Lot. I believe it was in 2018, maybe, actually, we started before 2018. The property became, it came under radar. Canaan was the owner of the property. We knew that it was wise for the city to take this property. We started conversations on how we can do this, where the funds would be allocated from, and what the future plan of this would be. So I'm going to say for the better part of two years, 2017 through 2018, there was a lot of negotiations, title search, phase one, to identify any potential contamination because this is a stretch of the rail line. After a lot of work, we did execute that acquisition of this property. And here we are in 2023 with this great opportunity now to chase this grant and bring that rail line into an active trail use. I think it's consistent with everything the council fought back in 2017 and 18 when we agreed that this was a path we wanted to take, the President intended. And now with these great funds being available coupled with the bonded funds that were approved in 2018 as well, we're well-prepared to work on it. So questions? Councilwoman Manichia?
So you said that the property mostly does, is not adjacent to any privately owned land, correct?
Potentially some privately owned land, but.
Potentially some privately-owned land, but not actively residential, like there's no.
Like housing and things like that?
On Groovin Street, which comes off of Red Mountain Ave. There may be a couple of house lots that are of others on that. But other than that, there's a rather large property on Red Mountain Avenue that is the majority of the frontage that's currently vacant right now. It's about ten or eleven acres.
So any, any areas that are adjacent to any of the properties or above properties, what would be the plan? Because I can understand why some residents might be concerned with traffic going that didn't go by their house in a different, different side of their land. What is the plan for, if any, for any privacy?
That's a great question, and I, and I feel free to ask Rista, because I think the stretch of property that Mr. Whitaker is concerned with, or the stretch of trail, is actually on Winston Road. Where, is that correct?
Can I ask?
Yeah, do not. We don't usually do it this way, but yeah.
My main area of concern is the Winston Road. But like I, like I was saying before, that I have friends that live on Red Mountain Ave, and they have not been notified. And like, I know that this part seems like it's going all the way up, and it is behind Red Mountain Ave and all that area right there. Oh, my question to you was, this part of the project is pretty much going to get all the way up to Newfield Road, correct?
For this, for this stretch of the property, for this grand round, there's a bridge that crosses the Nortontuck River there at Newfield Road. That's outside of the scope of this project, so it won't fully connect to Newfield Road. It'll kind of end at that bridge there, where we're going to try to, you know, keep folks off the bridge till we can redevelop it, and it'll really just be kind of an out-and-back, no-through access there.
So it's going to go up until the bridge?
Correct, yes.
So my main area of concern was, have the residents that have properties that are going to be connected to this or close to it, have they been notified? Have they had a chance to speak, to voice their concerns? Because you have the Warranton Mill, and you have all the people that live there. They might be concerned about this. You have, like I said, the people on Red Mountain Ave that may be concerned, that have had issues before when the trail hasn't been occupied, you know? Because it's a railroad track, it's probably in various states of disrepair. It's not that accessible, but they still have had problems with people back there. Now that we're going to open it up to be a trail, and more people are going to have access to it, it makes it a lot easier for people to travel up and down this path. I think that they have a concern in what may happen, and they should be able to voice their opinion. And I'm not sure if they have had the chance to. And as far as I'm concerned, and as far as I know from my friends there, they haven't been notified that this is happening.
I can, I can speak a little bit to that. So we're actually working with Torrenton Trails Network, who does a lot of the trail development in the city. And they're putting together next Thursday, I believe it is, it's the sixteenth, something at Bad Dog Brewery, where they just try to bring people in. I know that I haven't been part of that communication directly, but they've been reaching out to community organizations, you know, in the absence of reaching out to each individual that's all along that, that, that stretch there. So that's, that's something that we're doing in the, in the short term. I know Rista probably has been involved with this when the acquisition of the property. I think there was some, some outreach on that point. Of course, yeah, come up. Rista's had a lot more experience on this project than I have.
And so so after the acquisition of the property, we also did apply for a grant that was for our routing and design study. That has been ongoing for about six years. So we made a number of BSEs as our consultants, and we did a very in-depth routing study with the goal being how to connect downtown Woodstead to downtown Torrenton. It's a five-mile extension of Sioux Gromsman, which has been part of our planning documents, POCD, and the protocol action, whatever we did, which were very public, publicly done, a lot of public input, and this always kind of rose to the top. So when we did the routing study, we had to help several public meetings as to where is the best way to route this? And we had a lot of input and a lot of conversations and discussion. And for this section of trail, this was clearly identified as the best. We did talk to people, we did very in-depth conversations with Warranton Mills, and they were thrilled for it. When we talked to the management, some of the people, because they walk that anyway, they like it. Some of the concerns about some emergency response issues that have been needed and police calls there. This, this is a way to bring positive uses and provide quicker, faster response. So the, the communications that I've had in talking with people, this was very, very much a positive. And so this is why we're moving forward with that. Traditionally, you know, we did have BSE due to some design plans. The design plans are well enough to get us these construction costs, these construction estimates, but they're not construction-ready. So you heard me talk about the need for some additional money for the plan to bring those plans up. Once we find through those plans a little bit more before we finalize them, we have traditionally held a public meeting before COVID. They were always in person. I know when we did the one next to the senior center, we held it right at the senior center. We had plans out, had people come and talk, and we really get down to the nitty-gritty at those conversations about, you know, I know down there was, these are my azaleas, please don't ruin them, they're important to me, or I really want to fencer about this. And we can't get into that nitty-gritty of a conversation till our plans are a little bit further along, so that we can look at drainage and some of those things. So I think at this stage, we're relying on all of the public input that was done through the planning, plan of conservation development, through the Torrenton Walk charades we did, through the Torrenton Walks, through the routing study that we did. Torrenton Trail, like Nate just said, is continuing to do some outreach and talk to people. Then once we get the plans a little bit closer to design, we will have that public neighborhood input meeting and invite all the neighbors to come. We can talk about those, those very, the details of the, the trail. Do we need fencing? Do we need screening? Do we not want fencing or screening? And that comes just a little bit later from now. But at this stage, I think we've got quite a bit, quite a bit of public input in, in designing this trail as, you know, as far as the purchase of the trail. And this actually, I know the mayor was talking in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which is when the purchase went through. But Camp Barbary, before twenty fourteen, actually applied for the grant to purchase the property. So this has really been a long-term, citywide plan for the trail back there. And a lot of it is those connections that we talked about, and also to bring some more positive uses to that area, provide some recreational, and hopefully reduce some of the unsavory uses that have historically been down there. So that.
I would just add that that traffic study, which was very publicly driven, is actually posted on the Land Use webpage. It is available. I just pulled it up just to make sure there are some photographs of the public participation that occurred as a part of this development, this plan. The one thing I will say in respect to what I'm hearing you say is, when you're planning something this long, neighborhoods change. You know, people buy, people sell, you know? So I can hear what you're saying. If there are people that maybe bought in the last ten years, they were aware that all this planning had been taking place, it is an opportunity for us to remind those neighbors and re-engage those neighbors. And we certainly can do that.
And I, I just also want to add to that, that, you know, we're talking about in big terms, because we're running a five-mile-long trail. There's no way we can do that all at once. It's different segments, and different segments are in different phases of design. And I know that down in Old Woodstead Road and Woodstead Road, actually, the section from Harris Drive to the southerly end of Old Woodstead Road is the most difficult section because of a lot of, a lot of reasons. Crossing Woodstead Road, some wetlands. I know there's been some neighbors' concern, there's sewer lines, there's all sorts of issues. And that little segment has been the most difficult. So that has some general routing, but we do not have much design. And we do know that the neighbors are very interested in this section. And we will, when we're looking at that design, make sure to engage the neighbors maybe a little bit before we usually do, because there's been a lot more interest down there. And for a lot of reasons, they could be impacted differently than something like with Red Mountain Avenue, which is not that near to residential homes in any way, or that visible from residential homes. So I also just want you to rest assured, and that as we get to that design of that trail, that will be, there will be much more outreach for that as well.
Yeah, and one other thing for me, you know, if you want to share your contact information with me, I'd be glad to circulate all the, you know, I haven't been directly involved with this meeting for next week. It's going to be kind of a more, I wouldn't say a public meeting, but more of just an informational session with Torrenton Trails, where we can talk about these ideas and your concerns in a more general way. If you mind sharing that with your friends on Red Mountain Ave, that'd be really great. Have them come by, or you stop by and talk about kind of what the plans are, and, you know, have those conversations started. So if you, if you're willing to share your contact, I'd love to do that.
Definitely.
Aye.
Clarification, that since this is an ongoing project and people moving in and out of neighborhoods, that's the reason why people weren't told about this. It's why it hasn't been talked about, that the Torrenton Trails Network has been acceptable for giving the notice to people to talk about it. This is something that they want to do. I mean, if you asked me if I was, you know, if I was part of a basketball network and they want to put basketball courts all over the city, I'd be for that. When you have the Torrenton Trails Network talk about putting in trails, of course, you're not going to have the opposition, you're not going to have any sort of concerns or anything from the residents that it's going to be affected, because most of the people from the Trails Network don't live in these neighborhoods. They don't see the problems that, that could arise. And I understand that they want to add more positive uses to the land, but with more positive uses could also bring more negative uses as well. And they, like, these are the things I think that would be a good ask.
And they do apologize for engaging the public. So the council does need to deliver on this, and I do appreciate them very much.
Before dismissing, as long as we're having this dialogue, I'm, I'm not aware of the path, I'm not aware of the issues you're talking about. And we're, I feel like you're talking no fault of your own, you're being respectful, like at that, talking around the cause. Can you just nail it for me? What are you most concerned about, and what are your friends who live there? So.
Yeah, I think it's a point of order here. This is not the public hearing, and it was a presentation intended by this agenda item. So just for the record, calling a point of order.
Well, I'm trying to decide how I'm going to cast my vote, and there's somebody who's telling me, is it a safety issue here? Or, sir?
There, there are, what's it called, is safety issues, vagrancy issues along that path. They had the issues with Tent City. The police came in, you know, they broke it up. They just moved a little bit further. Like I said, my friend's not here to talk about all the problems he's had, the people going in and out, mostly from that community, and that back on the trail was not accessible. You know, as their plan has made it accessible now, it's going to be a bit.
Let me just, so is the issue there then, that this gentleman referred to, is there concern that this will possibly make it, make vagrancy easier in that area?
I'm hearing that that is the concern. But what we know is evidence-based, that trail work actually discourages that kind of use. When you have people that are on those trails on a regular basis, it's foot traffic, it's bicycle traffic. It actually discourages that kind of activity, which is the other reason we did focus on this piece of.
Would there be any lighting along?
It certainly isn't planned at this point in design.
Right, this grant does not cover any lighting at this time, largely because it is kind of not in a direct cityscape sort of area, it is in the woods, so.
And like I said, I'm not trying to speak on behalf of my friend's concern and his neighbor's concerns. My concern was that it wasn't a big problem for them to be able to voice their own concerns and have that addressed by the council.
Is it possible to table this until the next meeting, where we can issue more public comments?
What's, when is, what's the grant deadline on this one?
So the grant deadline is March first, so there'd be one additional council meeting prior to that.
Yes. We answer it, yes.
So I would move to table this. Fill me in process, you know, this will give the opportunity for residents through the public hearing to comment on that, you know, respectful, or this respective resolution, so I move to table.
All right, I, I do have one question unrelated to this, which I'd like to ask in anticipation, just as more of an information thing about this, this particular pathway.
Yes.
And again, this could be just me not remembering. I thought there was discussion that, that this is along that railroad, right, parallel line?
Yes.
I, I thought ONG had some, didn't we discuss on point that ONG was hoping that there was discussion that, that could be revitalized to use that for warehousing north? I, I thought there was some discussion years ago that they were considering developing warehousing based on getting that updated and, and, no.
So, no, and this, this section of town, there is no, there's no crossings or cross Route Four, so it'll never be used for rail line then.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, then it's completely discontinued. When we purchased it from Canaan, there was, what you might be thinking of was, there was, one of the reasons for the, the long delay in purchase was the state of Connecticut has written a first refusal for any rail line. And so when they heard that we were buying this, they said, no, no, we're going to buy instead, want it as a landing zone. And so then they did their due diligence, and they came back, and said, no, we can't get a train here. So it was the, the.
I think that was, it's happened several years ago.
Yeah.
So I have a motion to table, and at this point, I have to call for a second. Do I have a second to the motion to table?
Second.
Okay, I hear you, Councilman Nenechiya. So I have a motion to table a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll put this back on the agenda for the twenty-first. Thank you. All right, we'll be at item ten. My recommendation of the economic development director. Alan, the motion to object the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement for location of the analytics consultant with laser AI in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. This project is fully funded by the Building Community Communities Fund, as Fred explained, and the economic development directors noted in February first, twenty twenty-three.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nenechiya.
Second.
And second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Floor is open to questions.
Yeah, what, what is?
Yes, Councilman.
What, what are we going to get? What will this provide? Will this be a living sort of, sort of piece of software that we can do with?
Yeah, so this is, this is really a unique service that is provided. They provided some documentation and soul source, and went out and tried to make sure, and looked at a couple of different platforms. So what this does is it will allow us to geo-fence any area and say, who is traveling to this area and where are they coming from? Where are they going afterwards? And give us a foot count of traffic. And what this does is, you probably have all heard us know of our metropolitan status. And so as our urban center, we have retailers looking to relocate here. Primarily retailers, but it's also other businesses, and you look at workforce. I'm going to use the retailer as my example here. They look at a demographic of five miles around the location, ten miles around the location. And there's no true data to say who's actually coming here. What this does would allow us to geo-fence that area and find out who has come and where they came from, where did they go afterwards, and where were they before? So it will allow us to have real, real-life market data as to who's coming here. And I think that's a better explanation of where our metropolitan reaches, because traditional market studies just don't produce that type of solution. These aren't real, like, data.
No, no, I'm, I'm totally in favor of this. I've been in favor of this kind of thing for many, many years, actually. And I'm just, I'm actually concerned that this twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't seem like it buys us much. I mean, is this for the kind of, for the kind of data that we really need?
So it's a one-year subscription?
On, on, on a longitudinal basis, year after year, year over year. Twenty-five thousand doesn't seem nearly enough, so.
Well, so this, the services that they provide are, we, we've bought the whole package. So we, we've bought every service that they have provided for us. And it's, it's available to us for one year for twenty-five thousand dollars. If you want to subscribe to the next year, you can get to do that subscription.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, all right, all right. So this is the, I get to know me on, okay?
It is. Exactly, thank you.
And because we're doing this through the Building Community Communities Fund, this really would become part of our operating budget coming. Um uh this really would become part of our operating budget coming forward.
That's where I go with this one.
Yes, yeah.
Um and who's, is it the state sponsoring this?
No, no, this is um, you know, this is. Our emails, we get, you know, the equivalent of the cold call.
Yeah.
In email all the time. This uh this uh business opportunity came to Rista and myself. Uh Rista took the time to do the investigation, we met with them, we had a presentation via Zoom. Um and and agreed, this is valuable data. This is data.
These people, they live around the wild, they know what they're doing?
Uh so who knows?
This is just a bunch of smart, recent graduates putting this thing. I'm just, twenty-five thousand is reverse sticker shop for me. It's like this seems undervalued for the kind of.
So I can tell you, we were in a meeting with um one of our plaza property owners and he was saying, you know, I'm having a hard time. Trying to get these retailers to keep up the super placer data. Do you have placer data? And I'm like, we're getting it, but it's it's. It's relatively new, but it's becoming industry-wide as an indicator for what retailers are looking for, what businesses are looking for. So I would say it's very respected uh in value of the service. Um you know, it is a little bit on the newer side, but it's not, uh I don't expect this is something to go by the wayside anytime soon.
And I'm sitting on your side because it's all generated by these.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
It's 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 on the newer side because it's all generated by these.
Right.
You know, when I go to Target.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and I have my phone on me, that's data that they have access to.
They're going to pull that, they're going to pull that.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It's in Chinese.
And what is cool, one of the things, so there's a link that has a demo to this that I sat through. One of the things that I. Really thought was cool, they looked at the the data, the from your phone, but then they tracked it with credit card sales. And the credit card sales and the foot traffic trap exactly. So they've proven this data over and over and it's not just raw data. They've used it and then they've uh. Been able to, to make it presentable in a, in a way that any of us can read and understand without having to go through, you know. Uh raw data.
No, no, I mean clearly that's that's, you know, the data mining piece of it is what they're providing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And with that data mining, they're also providing, you know, that if you have a planet fitness. You know, in this plaza, you know, based on other municipalities, other cities. The um similar or other businesses that are attracted to the same. Um that are attracted to each other. So they almost do a little bit of matchmaking for you. Now, we can take that data to a plaza owner and say, based on the fact that you have a Jovians, fabric, and TJ Maxx. These are other businesses that generally get attracted to the same.
I don't know about that, very much as far as I'm concerned. I just wanted to know this about whatever they do.
Well, fine, the only ones we found.
We got it, right?
Correct. What do you get?
Yeah, I'm all for doing this.
Alright, other questions or comments? I mean, this question. Hearing that, now call us. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, uh attorney and motion to accept the revised building department report from December twenty twenty-two.
Boom.
Thank you, Councilwoman LeWitt. Second by Councilman Minichi. Questions?
What?
Was it, there was a zero or two missing on the last one? Alright, uh motion made and seconded. Do, uh if there are no questions, I'll call a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item twelve, attorney and motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize. Tax refunds in the day listed February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Your council, uh Councilman Walter?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Minichi. Questions on the memo? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, uh attorney and motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector. And authorize a super-use refund syndicate on the list, date February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman LeWitt.
Second.
And we have Councilman Kevin Earl. More questions on the memo or the refunds?
No.
Uh hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's your case. Item, moving into item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by departments.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Walter.
Second.
And second by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anything that you wanted to add this evening, Nate? Thank you. And Deputy Chief Truitt is here, if you want to. Update the council.
I'm here for, uh, Mary, thank you, counsel. Thank you. Uh I'm actually here not looking for something for a change, but looking for you, cool. I'm here with good news. Uh I received a call from Senator Murphy's office today. And before I heard the rest of the message, I was doing a dance in my office, depending what that meant. Um we applied for the AFG assistance of fire first grant, which is a federal grant, which is very competitive across the country. Um Drake actually got awarded eighty-three thousand dollars back in August when it first opened for their airbags. Um this is round seventeen, we're getting close to the end. This grant is supposed to close that. Um so federal government needs to say no more. Um so legally, I've been commenting with one representative who's knows these AFGs and kind of seems to have more background, so it's not moving for a while. And um I had some decent intel that maybe we're moving in the right direction. So again, I got the phone call today. Um saying that, city of Torrenton, the fire department under the operations and safety under the AFG has received five hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars, seventy-one cents. For our battery-operated rescue tools, before sets, which are two thousand seven. All hydraulic, not one with a battery operator, and training to become a a rescue technician level department, which is. Vehicle rescue, confined space rescue, rope rescue, which is all stuff that we do already with some certified members, but this will get everybody certified. Uh the trains will pay for it on the total grant. Um this wasn't, this was done as a team effort. Um chief and only chief, how we started doing grants a while back and. With each chief, we tweeted, um when I was interim chief, I I tweeted somewhere to the needs of Torrenton. Assistant chief Shelby helped you with the training part of it, Lieutenant Johnson helping with the rest of the component on that for the tools. Um so it's, you know, it's not me, it's, you know, it's it's a team effort that puts in and for those who are in the department. Um so with that, and also I need to thank the council because last year when I put in the budget, it was a capital money away. To hit the match for this grant. So it's the budgets, you know, money's already there, capital fund. The coverage is our our share for the grant. So I should be getting the official word Wednesday um to allow me to accept the grant. So um. Hurry for Torrenton finally. I've been on a high since three fifty-seven, so. Says that I've been on for twenty-four hours, so. Nice, you know, thank you for.
Absolutely. Yeah, and Deputy Chief calls in office and says, I think you really want to come to the council and tell them. Um questions for the Deputy Chief that was trained.
Yeah, just just one more time, could you repeat that for me? Uh this will train, this this will certify your your members to do what's this.
Sure, first you personally grant. Uh first grant is equipment, which is our extrication tools, basically the jaws of life. That's where we own those life. So we're replacing our current equipped hydraulic equipment. That it's well maintained, giving it every year, but um we're saving a lot of money. The other part is training. The other part is uh be certified and a rescue type training. Uh vehicle training, it's called vehicle rescue one and two.
Yeah.
Um it's for cars, stabilizing cars, all stuff. Rope rescue. Um using our ropes, which we do now, you know, get everybody certified to have a level. Uh confined space, going into, you know, animals and moles, uh which are retrained and. We're going to be the regional response for that. We've already been told by other departments because we're training that, they're going to follow us mutually.
Right.
Um and train rescue. So it's just a, a train that's done by the Connecticut Fire Academy, six-day training. And get certified to a level on the certificate, certified.
Well, will you, will your guys be able to train new hires down the road?
Uh we do now, but we can't certify that. They have to certify it through the state. Um but we. We offer training now, so this should be just an easy level for us. It's not anything new for us. Because that's what, you know, Torrenton city can run an island out here, so we. Jackal tracks.
Very, thank you.
Questions or comments for the Deputy Chief of the House?
And she couldn't be here, I didn't hear about the uh double book like I was, I'm not too calm coming here, so.
And thank you for doing that, no issue. And congratulations again, Chris. Great work, Senator. Uh, Rista?
Nothing, sir.
And some questions?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and I know that Co-Person Council is trying to zoom in, um but I don't think he has made it. Alright, then I'm going to move on to item fifteen. Entertaining motion to consider business by members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Minichi. Second by Councilman Kevin Earl. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh we'll start from this one. Anything, Councilwoman LeWitt?
Uh nothing, Mayor, thank you. No, just congratulations to both Ed and John for their years of service and. Um we're so fortunate that we had two of them get aligned for so many years, so. I I'm sure they're gone at this point, but my congratulations to the two of them.
Councilman, welcome. Anything this evening?
Oh. Me? Uh no, nothing for me, Mayor, thanks.
Councilman Oliver?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Minichi?
Uh just thank you to John and and congratulations from the fire department.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Earl.
Um, you know, my sentiments, thank you.
Absolutely. And uh the only thing that I would add is, um I know that the, at the last meeting, council for the um. Business by Mayor's and members, uh Councilman Minichi did ask for an update on the new pecker. Uh I hope that you all received my email, given the latest on this. Um we will keep you posted. Um but our plan is to show up at court on the twenty-eighth. Um the, I did hear earlier from Mr. Slavy. Uh a question about light and about our enforcement of light. Um what I will do is I will ask our light enforcement officer to come to one of the meetings uh in the next couple of weeks. Um to give you an update on that. But what I can tell you is this light committee continues to meet every two weeks. Uh we are um quite proud of the fact that we've brought all for a hundred properties into compliance. Uh we've also been successful in, where there is a lack of compliance, taking those properties um by foreclosure. Of their light liens um and have collected to date almost. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in light funds. The funds are primarily helping to cover legal fees for the paper litigation. Uh but also, uh as we continue to look at those uh funds, develop a spending strategy. To push those funds back out to the community in a way that has meaningful results. So um so I will, I'll have her come in and report to the board as to what's been going on. Uh and we did also include in last year's budget, uh this has always been a part-time uh position. Highly successful part-time, but we recognize um that it really deserves full-time attention. Uh and we are working to begin that position, a full-time position. Um we budgeted for that in, to begin in January. Hiring has been a little bit slow on the rounds, so we hope to have that position, uh so here is a full-time position uh in the spring. Uh moving on into item sixteen, I'll entertain the motion to open up meeting to the public to comment on the agenda items only. We get Councilman Kevin Earl?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Minichi. Uh all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All in, thank you. We're open to public again. Item, agenda items only, please. Second hearing now, we'll move on to item seventeen, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So.
Councilman Kevin Earl, Councilman Minichi, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any? We are adjourned, thank you all.
Yep, see you.